I can't help it if your clock is wrong. Well, I don't know. Mine says five, that says 5:01, this says 4:59. But I'm going to declare it's five o'clock. Call the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Vias? Mayor Pro Tim McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. I'm not going to read the section regarding the public speaking since there's absolutely no one here, and we'll read it again at seven o'clock. The next item would be the negative session, closed session. So, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have four closed sessions tonight. One is for the Airport Authority, three for the city. The first one for the Airport Authority is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. The parties, pertaining to the SEC litigation, and the parties are set forth on the agenda. Item B is the City Council version of the same litigation pursuant to the same code section. Item C is employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 5495-7B, position as the city manager's position. And the last item is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1, and that is litigation between the City of Victorville and Cali Care, and the case numbers are on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it at either the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting. And I would ask also, just for the record, that you formally ask for public comment.
All right. There's no comments from the councilmembers at this time in time. We're going to...
I don't think you...
What?
Just for the purposes of the agenda, if you'd asked for public comment, just so it's on the record.
Oh, I did. First, there's no one here. But I have to say, is anyone here that...
Does staff say it's an agenda item for public comment?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council under the public comment section? For the record, there's not a soul in the audience, but the attorney advises me I have to ask. I did. There's no one here. Now can we adjourn to executive session? Before we do, I do have a question of the attorney. We do have an appeal for the council later, and the individual is appealing on the basis that it's unconstitutional in the sense it's beyond the authority of this council to act on a constitutional question. Does that constitute a threat of litigation?
At this point, it's not. I don't think it rises to the level of a threat of litigation he has in correspondence with the city asserted all kinds of claims. But the appeal on the agenda at seven o'clock is limited to the issue of the amount of the taxes owed by, the amount of the TOT owed by the various entities, and whether they want to appeal those amounts.
Well, I realize that we're appealing the amount, and we're going to have the hearing, and we're going to handle each one of those. But if he says the basis for the objection is it's a constitutional question, that's beyond this body to act on.
It certainly is, but you still, he has a, he has a due process right to his appeal hearing, and you should hold the appeal hearing. We should not get into the merits of his arguments, however. That's why we have courthouses.
Right. Very good. Thank you. Any questions, your comments from the councilmembers?
If his arguments have no merit, then the court will decide that eventually, if he decides to pursue that.
Then we'll adjourn to executive session at 5:03. Thank you. Thank you all very much for attending this council meeting tonight. I'm going to call the meeting to order at this time. The City Council met at five o'clock and went into closed session. I would ask that the city attorney make whatever announcements are appropriate as a result of the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had four closed sessions this evening, one for the Airport Authority, three for the City Council. They are all set forth on the agenda, the parties to the litigation, as well as the code sections pursuant to which they were held. With respect to item C, the public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 5495-7B, we do have reportable action. The council, by unanimous vote, voted to extend the city manager's contract until the end of June of 2016 and to supersede any of the notice provisions pertaining there too. That is the reportable action with respect to that one item. There is no reportable action with respect to the other litigation items.
Is that a report, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
We have the next two items. We have the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and the invocation tonight will be given by Father Patrick Travers, if you would come to the microphone. And then, when that's finished, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by our police chief, Sam Lucia. Welcome, Father Travers.
Almighty Father, as we gather here this evening, let us count our blessings for our homes, our families, our opportunities, our citizenship in this blessed-of-all countries, and its natural resources, and the genius of its people. Almighty Father, we thank you for allowing us to live in this time of history with its great challenges to our belief in ourselves, in our country, and our God. On occasion like this, let us know that there is hope for the future, and we can dispel some of our anxieties. May you continue to bless, O God, the efforts and the activities of our City Council, and may they realize that without your help, they are rudderless in the turmoil and uncertainties of life. May we ask your blessings, then, on the proceedings and the discussions of this evening. We ask that in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the... (audio cuts out) We have no, we do not have any presentations to make tonight, so we'll go to the agenda. Madam City Clerk?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council, and there is one revision that has been submitted for tonight's agenda, and that is concerning item A1 on the TOT appeal hearing. There is an email communication that was received this evening from the attorney for the appellant's regarding a settlement offer, and those are all the revisions I have, Mayor Cox.
I'm sorry, that was received when?
That was received approximately 6:00 PM this evening.
Okay. Did everyone get a copy of that?
Yes, there is a copy on the dais.
Okay, thank you. At this time, is the time for public comments. I hope you listened carefully to the city clerk point out the rules that we follow, three minutes per individual. But I do want to state, because so many individuals believe that they can come to the council, make a request, we address the council if it is not agenda-edged. We cannot enter into that debate, don't make a decision. We can put it on a future agenda item, but the best that we can do, if it's a request, is probably refer the matter to the staff or the city manager. But so many people are disappointed that they make a request, wait for us to answer what in fact we can't, because it's not on the agenda, we cannot enter into that debate. The first individual that I have who wants to address the council is Lillian N. Ardon. Come on up to the microphone. Please pull the microphone down where you can speak into it, and you may begin. You have three minutes, and thank you for coming.
Good evening. I just bought a house about three weeks ago, and it's in a corner lot. And I have noticed a lot of the people around the neighborhood kind of cross my property to get to the other side, because it's a corner lot. And I also noticed a lot of kids are also playing with their bike, and on the side of my property, there was a three-feet retaining wall that has fallen down before I bought the property. There's some stock, wire stock, coming up, and I'm scared that somebody is going to get hurt. I called the city, and I spoke many times with Jamie, Sheila, and Mr. McGlynn, who denied my, an encroachment permit. And the reason why they said is because I have a fire hydrant in the very corner of my property. They said that it's supposed to be at 12 feet within my property that I have to put the fence in. So, my question is, does it, is it supposed to be all around my property, or is it just in the corner where the fire hydrant is? So, I brought some pictures, I brought my laptop, but I believe it's not possible for me to show you all that, so I'm going to go ahead and email it to, I'm sorry, to you. So, I'm going to email it to her, and she's going to give them to you, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Once I, once we get those pictures, that'll be referred to the appropriate department. Doug Robinson, our city manager, has heard your request, and there will be a follow-up to you. Thank you. The next card I have is Leilani Morris.
I moved to Victorville back in 1992. I purchased a home on La Cucanta. I've lived there with my three daughters and my husband at the time. My husband moved out 2000, year 2000, and everything was turned into my name. My name at that time was Leilani Bellamy. I've changed it to Leilani Morris on the card. 2011, October, I had problems with the water company. The water company refused to talk to me. They shut my water off in October 2011 due to unpaid bill. I paid my bill. The bill was $185 with $100 reconnection. Paid that off in November after the water was shut off in October 2011. They refused to turn my water on. As of today, it's been a year and a half. I have no water in my home. Sanitary situation has been really bad. I have to go buy 10 gallons, five gallons, water, and go to the supermarket and bring water in. I lived there by myself. My husband moved out in 2000. My children moved out in 2005, so I'm there by myself. I feel like I am a homeless person without water. I went to them in 2012, January. I said, "My water is not on. I've paid my water and my trash current 2012." Still, they did not pay my, turn my water on. I spoke with Adele. Adele came down and sat and talked to me. She says that the only way we turn your water on, you can do three things. You can sell your house, move into apartment, and get your water turned on. You can, you can call your ex and have him to come down and put the, his, let everybody know that he's no longer living in the property, you are. I've been married to that man since 1989. He, his name was on the property because he had the VA loan. When I bought the house back in 91, the house was $150,000. I have no problem with the water when the water was in my name. They took my water out...
10 seconds.
They took my, they took my name off the water bill, put it in my ex. I gave them a marriage certificate showing that I was married to him. Please turn my water on. Adele still did not turn my water on. So, I came last week and talked with Carolene Bates, and said that I went to, I went to legal aid. Legal aid said I can either sue the water company or come to the board, which I am now. I'm standing before you.
I hate to interrupt you, but I'm going to. We do have the three-minute rule, and as much as we'd like to respond, the best I can do is ask the city manager if there's someone here who can see this nice lady before she leaves, set up an appointment as soon as possible, see her, to see if we can get to the bottom of this. As a result, this is not on the agenda. We can't take an action. We can't hold that discussion.
I understand.
But we heard you, and we will respond, and Sean McGlynn is coming in the back, and he will meet you, and if you will go around right behind you, we will be talking with you and see what we can do. We, we understand. Thank you.
And my water will be attended to?
Understand.
Okay.
I understand. The next card that I have is Margie Simpson.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, staff members. My name is Margie Simpson of Victorville, and I'm here to report to you from the family or the friends of the library. And I want to just report to you that they are involved in a fundraising program to replace or update all of the computers. You may not be aware of it, but they have an adult computer lab that runs, I think, two days a week for the last two or three years. The participation in the program for the youth and the teens and the adults have increased this year, so there's a lot more traffic going on at the library, a lot more activities. It's a library that you can be proud of in spite of the building. And I just am a little concerned. I was hopeful that when you, when the city bought property for the library, that they would then build a library. At this time, because of economics, I believe the city has chosen not to follow through on that plan. I would hope that when they do sell the property, that they will add some funds to that building and improve. There's some areas that need to be improved. And to, with that being said, one of the things I'm concerned about is, when the city incorporated, the purpose, I believe, was that the San Bernardino County felt as if the city leaders would have a better knowledge of what we, as a community, needed. And so, that's when that had happened. That was to serve the purpose of the community. But what I've seen lately is that the city leaders have chosen to go into, I guess, big business, buying the airport, and they're putting a lot of money into the airport. I'd like to see some of that money returned back to the services for the community, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have one other card, but it is for the next item on the agenda, which is Agenda Item 1A. I have no other cards from individuals. I'm seeing no others that wish to speak. We're going to move from the public comment section to item A1. Item A1 is an appeal before the City Council. It's an appeal to the City Council regarding the transient occupancy tax assessments. I believe this started out with multiple property owners and hotels, and motels, and as I understand it, we are down to three, three units, motels, hotels. They're represented, represented by an attorney, Mr. Frank Weiser, and he is going to address the council in regard to this appeal hearing. Mr. Weiser, would you come to the microphone, please?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Frank Weiser, on behalf of the remaining appellants, Budget In, Kentwood, the Days In, and the Travel In. I'm not going to address the, I, I had a appeal letter, and I believe the record shows extensive correspondence, and I raised during the course of the proceedings extensive constitutional law issues, and I don't think that's the legality of the ordinance is, as I understand, wouldn't really be before the council to rule on the legality of its own ordinance, although I put it in there to preserve the issues on appeal, so I'm certainly not going to go over and belabor that. To be brief, first of all, I did bring an email and offer to Ms. Bates around six o'clock as I was coming here. I had somebody drive me this afternoon because I was not feeling well. And I apologize to the council for bringing that offer to you so late. I did not receive any authority until about 5:55. So, when I did receive it, I immediately sent it over to Ms. Bates. And I want to first start out by indicating that the remaining three owners or three motels definitely want to settle with the city. But that being said, if I have to put my presentation together, I'll do that, so we have it for the record. There are three main contentions. First of all, as far as the hearing itself at the level that Ms. Bates conducted, she conducted it very professionally, and I appreciate all the consideration she gave us, so my contention is not with her in any way personally. I did feel, though, that the city did not carry its burden, and that is that Mr. Thompson, and I think the record will reflect it, the administrative record that you should have before you, that Mr. Thompson put on a presentation that had nothing to do with the actual assessments, forgetting about all the history leading up to how he came to his assessments. He merely, at the hearing, went over and pretty much lectured the motel owners about what the requirements were of the TOT. And my contention is, is that for procedural due process purposes, notice an opportunity to be heard, he should have gone over his actual figures, how he came to each figure for each motel, explained it, and then we would have had the opportunity to debate it and come up with whether we agreed or not. And I still, Mr. Thompson's not here today, and I still am in the dark, really, as to how he truly came up with the figures he did for each particular motel, and the ones here in particular. Getting to these three motels, it seemed to us that, however he came to it, his methodology wasn't explained to us. It seems arbitrary. Now, he may be, assuming he's correct, but it just seems arbitrary. We don't know how he came to it, and it seems that some motels that were far exceeding in size and business, like the, as I understand it, the Hawthorne Suites, which was not a part of our original group, had well over 100 rooms, and the figures that he came up for them was far less. I think it was something like $700. So, you have some figures of 60 motel rooms that are less, 100 motel rooms that are less, and it just seems to us arbitrary, without an explanation, without how his methodology was presented, without the presentation. It seems that that is a fundamental violation of the due process clause. The other thing is the issue of how we got to that point, and I want to explain something to the council. The motel owners came to me. I didn't come to them. For whatever reason they had for not wanting to originally submit to the audit, and I could well understand the city's interest and their understanding of, they want to see the records, they want to verify whether the taxes are being properly reported, whether they're being paid, regardless of whether I'm correct or not on the ultimate constitutionality, assuming, arguing for this purposes that they, it is constitutional. There's a big debate going on, I believe, in the Ninth Circuit. I argued recently en banc before 11 judges in Seattle on a motel ordinance in Los Angeles where the City of LA has the right to inspect records without warrant or consent. It was a police ordinance, and there are similar ordinances throughout the state, as I understand it. But it appears that that would also apply to possibly financial records in the transient occupancy tax area. And the debate that seems to be going on, I had a published opinion last year, Patel versus City of Los Angeles, a three-judge panel member, a three-judge panel in the Ninth Circuit. We lost a facial challenge, two to one, but the Ninth Circuit decided to take it up on review before 11 judges. I think the attitude of the cities, and perhaps correctly, is that the motel guest doesn't have a right of privacy to these records. They don't have possession of it. The records are financial records of the city to report the tax. Therefore, the motel owners don't have a right of privacy. That's their, I think that would be the city's position. Therefore, we have a right to demand it. You don't give it. We can just estimate the tax or take whatever measures we, we want to take. The problem with that is that the U.S. Supreme Court ruled last year in a case called USV Jones and the case this past term, Florida versus Boswick, written by... for each motel, explained it, and then we would have had the opportunity to debate it and come up with whether we agreed or not. And I still, Mr. Thompson's not here today, and I still am in the dark, really, as to how he truly came up with the figures he did for each particular motel and the ones here in particular. Getting to these three motels, it seemed to us that however he came to it, his methodology wasn't explained to us. It seems arbitrary. Now, he may, assuming he's correct, but it just seems arbitrary. We don't know how he came to it, and it seems that some motels that were far exceeding in size and business, like the, as I understand it, the Hawthorne Suites, which was not a part of our original group, had well over 100 rooms, and the figures that he came up for them was far less. I think it was something like $700. So you have some figures of 60 motel rooms that are less, 100 motel rooms that are less, and it just seems to us arbitrary, without an explanation, without how his methodology was presented, without the presentation. It seems that that is a fundamental violation of the due process clause. The other thing is the issue of how we got to that point, and I want to explain something to the council. The motel owners came to me. I didn't come to them. For whatever reason they had for not wanting to originally submit to the audit, and I could well understand the city's interest and their understanding of, they want to see the records, they want to verify whether the taxes are being properly reported, whether they're being paid, regardless of whether I'm correct or not on the ultimate constitutionality, assuming, arguendo for this purposes, that it is constitutional. There's a big debate going on, I believe, in the Ninth Circuit. I argued recently en banc before 11 judges in Seattle on a motel ordinance in Los Angeles where the City of O.A. has the right to inspect records without warrant or consent. It was a police ordinance, and there are similar ordinances throughout the state, as I understand it. But it appears that that would also apply to possibly financial records in the transient occupancy tax area. And the debate that seems to be going on, I had a published opinion last year, Patel versus City of Los Angeles, a three-judge panel member, a three-judge panel in the Ninth Circuit. We lost a facial challenge, two to one, but the Ninth Circuit decided to take it up on review before 11 judges. I think the attitude of the cities, and perhaps correctly, is that the motel guest doesn't have a right of privacy to these records. They don't have possession of it. The records are financial records of the city to report the tax. Therefore, the motel owners don't have a right of privacy. That's their, I think that would be the city's position. Therefore, we have a right to demand it. You don't give it. We can just estimate the tax or take whatever measures we want to take. The problem with that is that the U.S. Supreme Court ruled last year in a case called USV Jones and the case this past term, Florida versus Boswick, written by Justice Scalia, the major conservative on the court, that independent of a person's right to privacy under the Fourth Amendment, they may not have a right to privacy to certain records or property or whatever, their property rights are still protected under the Fourth Amendment. If you have possession of papers or records, even if you don't have a right to privacy, you still have a right to Fourth Amendment protections. And I think that's the central issue that came out of the motel owners saying that, whether you like it or not, and the city, I can understand, may say, we don't like it, but that we still have a Fourth Amendment right to stand on our constitutional right under the Fourth Amendment to either go out and get a subpoena or a consent. And that's where I think the argument played itself out. Now, that being said, and I understand, once again, without agreeing, but respectfully or understanding the city's position, that there was a better way to handle it. And that was that during the process, we had asked to meet with city officials. As I understood it, we were denied. That was not Ms. Bates in any way, and not Ms. Kielman in any way. I think the record will reflect what the correspondence says. And I think they wanted, the motel owners wanted to meet, they wanted to resolve this without having to go to this point. And there were certain threats made, duress made, in which they decided, under that duress and threats, that they would give the records. And that's where we come to the second issue of whether, in fact, the records that were given, that were used, that were given for purposes of the ultimate assessment, still violates Fourth Amendment rights. And it's my understanding of the law, and the city attorney certainly can look at my authority and come to his own decision, that if you have a Fourth Amendment right and you were forced to give up that right under duress, and you're penalized in some way for standing on that right, that's a violation of your constitutional rights. And both the California Supreme Court, as I understand it, and federal law agree with that. So that's our basic issue here. But all that being said, and it's all nice theoretical arguments, these motel owners are the last three. They don't want to go to court. They want to settle. There is an offer on the, before the council. I know it's come to you very late for consideration at this point. I would respectfully suggest that perhaps the council can hear whatever that has to hear, close the hearing, and perhaps take the matter under submission. I don't have to be here when the council ultimately votes on it, but maybe in that interim period, the council can take our offer under closed session, see if the matter can be resolved. With that, I, thank you, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in regard to this appeal hearing? We indicated there are three businesses. They're representative of council. Council has finished his presentation. There's no one else to speak. I'm going to close this hearing at this time. Before I ask for comments from the City Council, there were some interesting issues raised by the attorney. They're legal issues. We have a city attorney. We are not the attorneys. I'd ask the city attorney to comment before the City Council has questions or discusses this.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. As you will note, you have a pretty extensive copy of the administrative record before you. A lot of the arguments raised have already been addressed and have been addressed in the record before you in correspondence between the attorney's office and members of the city's staff. I have not heard anything in terms of constitutional issues that give me any concerns with respect to vulnerability on behalf of the city. We have followed the municipal code in connection with this proceeding. The municipal code has several layers of essentially of an appeal process, this being the last, where the property owners or the operators will given an opportunity to appeal the initial determinations to the city clerk. I would point out that in connection with that process, as a matter of fact, one of the hotels represented by the attorneys actually had the amount reduced from $26,000 to $7,800 and some odd dollars. So the process did work in accordance with your municipal code. As to the constitutionality arguments, you know, certainly if we want to debate those and analyze those, the proper forum for that is essentially the courthouse next door. You have a very complete record here. I believe that staff has given several opportunities to the appellants to provide the documentation. These are financial records. These are revenues. These are monies actually paid for by the patrons of the hotels and essentially are passed through to the city. They are not to be held by the city. And here, what's happening is essentially the hotel operators have kept monies that rightfully belong to the city pursuant to the provisions of your municipal code. So with that, with respect to the, sorry, the proposed settlement offer, unfortunately, we got that too late to consider it in closed session. It wasn't agendized as a closed session item, but you have it before you, and you certainly can consider that at this time. There is an appeal, sorry, a proposed settlement that I think cuts the proposed tax amounts in half. My concern with it would be that you have already made decisions that have affected other hotels in the city of Victorville. They have asked previously for differing amounts, and if you accept the proposed settlement, you'd be treating this group of hotels differently than you've already treated the past hotels.
Questions from council members to our city attorney? Questions of our council members, city attorney, or staff?
As you all know, I'm a certified public accountant. I've been in the record-keeping business all my professional career. Gloria's in a similar kind of business. I've made a lot of arguments with taxing authorities over the years about why my client shouldn't pay as much money as the taxing authority thought they should pay. All those arguments were based on my interpretation of the law and the facts and the records that we had before us, the records that my client kept. I never once have tried to make the argument that because my client didn't have records or because they didn't want to show them to the auditor, that that was the reason for not assessing a tax. I think that argument has no merit, no weight, would absolutely no place to go with that. I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see any sense to that argument at all. I don't want to engage in a debate, but that's just my observation.
I understand. Any other comments by council members or questions? Yes?
Well, I have the same thinking as Councilman Kennedy. If they refuse to provide the records, that's not going to allow for them to not pay the tax. So therefore, there's no argument there.
Other council members? This was a very extensive record that was submitted to the council members. I went through it. It's a little bit of difficult reading because of the staff's information that went out to the individuals, responses that, excuse me, the responses that came back, the appeal hearings. And I thought it was really interesting that Days In, it's in the agenda, that with the additional review resulted in an adjustment from the amount due to, from $26,000 plus to $7,000, which kind of indicates that the system worked. Once they began working together and made the records available, I can't speak on the other two because I'm not sure if there was an assessment or not. Very difficult to go through this. We don't like to sit here and impose penalties on business people in this community. We like to cooperate. But it does appear, from reading the record, from reading the appeals and reading all the information available, that it's simply money owed to the city. I didn't see any evidence, and this is what I was looking for, that staff or the auditor or someone had made a mistake or that there was additional information that would show that those assessments were in error. We take that oath of fiduciary responsibility on behalf of the city, and I think where we have all of this data that indicates the money is owed, I don't see how we could settle for a less amount. And if there's no further questions or comments, the chair is open for a motion.
This is a motion to uphold the city clerk's decision?
To deny the appeal. Deny the appeal.
This is an appeal, so it would be to approve the appeal or deny the appeal. The motion is to deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We do.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
So the appeal to the council has been denied. Staff's recommendation has been upheld. We will move on to the public hearings. We have no items. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
No public hearings. The consent agenda, which can be handled as items 1 through 6.
Mr. Mayor, just to confirm with our city attorney, C3 includes Cooley Construction listed in the agenda item. My firm does business with them. Can I just abstain from that, or do I need to pull it and step out?
I would pull that item and vote on the additional items and step out during the discussion on that particular item and disclose why you, what your conflict is.
Since before we take an action on the consent item, it would be appropriate to have a motion and a second to pull Item C3 from the consent item. We have a motion and a second? Those in favor say aye. Or, no, I'm sorry, we're not saying aye. We're voting.
That's, that's all right, Mr. Mayor. You can take a voice vote on that particular action.
Okay. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is, so we will now take an action on the consent with exception of C3. And then because of the conflict, Mr. McEchrin will step out. The council will vote separately on C3. The motion, next motion would be on the consent except C3.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Portem McEchrin. Motion carries unanimously.
C3 was pulled because of the conflict. He has now left the dais and left the room, and now we have a motion. The chair is open for motion for Item C3.
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye. Aye is a four. It's unanimous for those present. Somebody will please ask Mr. McEchrin to return. The next item that we have, next item is the written communications, beginning with Item 1 on written communication. Approval of annual purchase order request for Mojave Water Agency. Annual purchase order for $1,350,000. Is that correct, staff? Chair is open for motion.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 2, Water Master Administrative Budget and Assessment Rates. This is approval of purchase order request for Mojave Basin Area Water Master for quarterly water production reports and invoices for administrative and biological assessments for fiscal year 2013, 2014. The amount is $105,000.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia.
Item 3, Approval of Purchase Order Request for MWA's R-Cube Water Pumping Costs for Fiscal Year 2013, 2014 in the amount of $681,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias.
Item 4, Approval of a
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'm sorry.
How do you, how do you vote? Okay. Motion carries unanimously.
Sorry about that. Next item, item number 4, Approval of a Purchase Order Request for Mojave Water Agency for the district's remaining portion of ore-ground wash recharge project, not to exceed $600,000.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Next is the temporary assignment of free production allowance that the Board of Directors approved the payment of temporary assignment of free production allowance in the amount of $547,000. No questions? Chair is open for motion.
Motion by Mayor Portem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 6, Approval of Purchase Order Request for Mojave Basin Area Water Master for Replacement Obligations for Fiscal Year 2013, 2014. This is the annual purchase order. This fiscal impact would be $2,465,040.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 7 is a revised 33rd Amendment to Law Enforcement Contract 90-909. As I understand this, this is for the purpose of adding two deputies?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is for the purpose of adding two deputies to the contract. In discussions after the budget hearing in June, discussions between our police captain and myself, we were looking at innovative ways to be able to fulfill the council's wishes and the chief's wishes to add two new deputies as quickly as possible. As the council will recall, part of the budget hearing, we are, were, and still are waiting to finalize our property tax numbers from last year. Those property taxes continue to come in sometimes in July and August, although they are attributable to last year's revenues. Until we have those, staff was not comfortable increasing the amount of property taxes in this year's budget, although we believe, based on the interim data that we had, that there will be an increase for the current fiscal year. But in an overabundance of caution and being conservative, we budgeted flat for property taxes at this point in time and promised to bring that item back to the council in September. In discussions with Captain Lucia, if we were to bring the item back in September and then go through the county process to add two deputy positions to the contract, that could take as much as four to six to maybe even a couple of more weeks, depending on the board's schedule. This item, should it be approved tonight, would actually add those positions to our contract, however, not provide the funding for them. In fact, they would remain unfilled until such time as we have that revenue discussion in about a month. At that point in time, assuming revenues come in as we expect them to, we would be free to add those positions upon council approval, and it would take maybe as little as two weeks' time rather than up to two months. So the way it's budgeted right now, it's budgeted with the additional dollars beginning October 1st, but also with a credit. The way the sheriff's contract works, if you have a deputy that's out due to a medical injury, if you have a deputy that perhaps resigns and it is unfilled at the time, you actually receive a credit on a quarterly basis. So in order not to upset the overall budget, we've had this listed on your agenda tonight as a cost of, I believe it's $280,000, $260,000 with a credit, a corresponding credit amount. So assuming the worst, which we aren't going to, but if the worst were to come to pass, we simply wouldn't fill these positions and we would obtain a credit over the remaining quarters of the contract.
Thank you, Doug. This is going to make a lot of people happy, particularly two council members here, and the rest of us agree with them, have been pushing for this for some time, and I'm sure they're hoping that in December when we, or January, when we have a better handle on what the property taxes are going to be, probably we'll have another discussion on this.
Mr. Mayor, just a question. Doug, I know at least for a few years, we were budgeting positions and paying for them and then getting a credit back because they weren't filled. But did we last year stop that procedure?
We did when the CalCap went up last year. So this actually, should it, should we ultimately not fill these positions, we would need to budget a couple thousand dollars in order to cover the CalCap charges. But I think that's a very low likelihood of happening. I'm very confident that we'll be fine on property taxes and we'll have the money in order to make this happen.
Chair is open for a motion. I can't vote on this question.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Portem McEchrin. Motion carries unanimously.
Somehow she beat me to it.
Item 8, License Agreement with Boeing Company. Item eight, license agreement with Boeing Company. We have a lot of information here. I have read this, I'm sure all the councilmen have. Doug or Keith, can you give a short abbreviated version of what this means?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can, thank you for the opportunity. This item is a short-term contract that involves the Boeing Company, and there's no consideration directly offered for what's provided for in this agreement. Effectively, what we're doing is availing airport property, both within the safety area and airport property owned by us that's on the approach end of runway 17. And that's to allow Boeing to do some flight testing, particularly as it relates to some acoustical flight test requirements. This is a program that they coordinate with the FAA, and the only contingency that I would add to this item, as we thought some of the technicals would have been dealt with by now and approved by now, is that we approve this item subject to some technical issues worked out with the FAA and approved by the FAA, particularly it's relating to where we would be able to put microphones, microphone-type equipment to do the flight test, flight testing in the safety area. So, we're just coordinating the obtaining of those approvals right now. Other than that, despite not receiving a direct consideration for the availability of property to Boeing, certainly we expect to receive monies through landing fees and fuel flowage fees related to their flight test operations.
Thank you, Keith. The recommended action before the council is to approve entering into a, entering into a license agreement between Boeing Company Southern California Logistics Airport.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckren, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is a standard lease agreement with Leading Edge Aviation Services. Our staff indicated that an individual may want to speak to the city council in regard to this item.
Yes, if I might, I'll have the opportunity to introduce, at this time, Chris Horano, who's the president of Leading Edge Aviation Services, who's one of your larger tenants at the airport. This is a smaller facility, but I think it kind of shows how Leading Edge is growing and how SCLA has been a large part of their, their growth.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Chris Horano with Leading Edge Aviation, where, as Keith said, we're tending out at your airport there. And we have seen an increase in our business nationwide. Victorville is one of our locations. We also do business in Texas, state of Washington, and on the East Coast. But we're looking at expanding some of our operations currently, so we're working with your staff to develop longer-term lease agreements that allow us to invest in some capital improvements to improve some of the facility efficiency and some of the state-of-the-art equipment we need to process the aircraft. We are seeing some interest internationally as well in this area, so it, it is working out well for us to be reasonable proximity to LAX and San Francisco as it pertains to aircraft. So, I, I really just wanted to introduce myself to the council and the city staff and thank the, the airport managers for assisting us as we make further investment in the community and this infrastructure, and Victorville becomes a increasingly more important resource to us for our business as we grow. So, thank you very much, and I'd like to meet with Keith later if I can. Thank you. And certainly open to any questions you may have as well.
Chris, thank you for your comments. Certainly, the council looks forward to a continuing relationship with your company. It's been very good for us, very good for the airport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, in, in speaking to this item, Leading Edge currently occupies three hangars. One that we characterize as a narrow-body hangar that's capable of accommodating two narrow-body aircraft simultaneously, basically putting two aircraft in one hangar nose-to-nose. It also occupies, Leading Edge also occupies two wide-body hangars, hangar 746 and 747. And just recently, we approved an amendment basically extending the agreement for hangar 747. But we also worked out a very complicated arrangement with Leading Edge, enabling them to put in additional capital equipment so they can meet some very strict painting requirements that are being imposed upon them by the Boeing Company. This item deals with a smaller hangar facility. It's a hangar facility that was actually occupied by Boeing when they were operating their unmanned helicopter system program at SCLA, and I believe it was about this time last year when they actually vacated that premises. And Boeing was using it largely just as a, as a hangar to store their unmanned helicopters. But interesting with this hangar, it actually has a fully functional paint booth built into it. In fact, we inherited two small paint booth facilities that we had actually maintained the permits to operate. So, as Leading Edge had actually found out about this facility, and as Leading Edge had started expanding some of their services into the helicopter arena, they actually took great interest, oh, maybe about nine months ago, in this hangar. And then finally, just recently, this is an item that became of increasing need for them. So, with that, this is an item that occupies one of our paint booth facilities. It's unbudgeted revenue, which is why you see the additional appropriation on the revenue column. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Keith. This item would be, one, I'm assuming one motion is okay, Mr. Attorney, for both items. Number one, entering into a standard lease agreement between Leading Edge Aviation Services, Inc., and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority to lease building 879 and two, increase unbudgeted revenue in the amount of $60,000.
Yes, appropriate to handle them together.
Chair is open for a motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckren, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Just almost done, folks. Hang on. We are now, unless I have skipped something, at E1, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Councilmembers?
I have, I have one. I was wondering if the council would be interested in agendizing, starting closed session, keeping it the same at 5:00, and starting open session at 6:00. I've had parents that would like to bring their children, but say that by the time it starts at 7:00, it gets into the, you know, too far into dinner and homework, and, and they want to participate more in the city council meetings and bring their kids, but it's just, it runs too late. So, I was wondering if we could try starting it at 6:00, and then if closed session is longer, then we could go back into closed session if we don't finish it between 5:00 and 6:00.
I concur.
Councilmembers? We seem to have a majority that can, that concurs with, yes, I agree. Question, does this change, does this require a kind of a policy change or an ordinance change to change?
Yeah, I think you are, I think you establish your meeting times and dates by resolution and, and the municipal code as well, so we're taking ordinance, but my understanding is we want to put this on the next agenda for a formal direction.
Yes. Yes. We're all in agreement that when, when we were so busy, I think the, the record is clear that we not only needed a couple of hours in executive session, but sometimes more. Hopefully, that's over with, and we can get back to more business that we deal with all the time, rather than having to spend that time in executive session. But right here, 6:00 is a good idea. Councilmembers agree, whatever, we need to get that started, if we can do that. We do, we don't need a vote to put that on the agenda, do we?
Well, it's already, there's a consensus to put it on the agenda.
Consensus is there, we will do that next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other items from councilmembers? Mr. McEckren?
Yeah, I previously communicated with our city attorney. I know that other councilmembers have had this issue brought to them, but the road going into the library is, it's a private road. We have no jurisdiction over it, but we get all the complaints. And I actually want to see us formally agendize this issue, what the options are to this city council with respect to that road, because at some point, I mean, we're not building a new library anytime soon, and I think that it's high time that we address the entrance there. I know staff has tried to, through signage, to direct people to get to the library via other routes, but at the end of the day, most people know to get the library through that road. So, I'd just like to agendize having that on the council and hearing what our options are.
I agree.
Agree, council agrees. Good. Next, next item, I mean, next agenda item, if that's possible, next council meeting, I mean. We will do that. Other councilmembers?
I have a couple things, and I want to just kind of key off of Angela's suggestion. And this is a two-edged sword, so I'm proposing it for discussion. I'd like to consider, if we're going to start public, open session at 6:00, I'd like to consider putting public comment at the end of the meeting instead of at the beginning. While my intent is not to discourage public comment, what I know is, and I think we all know, that we've listened to an awful lot of public comment, and then the action before us that we, that we were dealing with was either different, or the, the public comment response, or all the public comment was just kind of inappropriate based on the action. I'm just wondering if it makes more sense to have it at the end, and so I just, I'd like to at least have that discussion. And if I, if we, if I lose, I'm not that committed to it, but I would like to talk about it.
I think, I think we should have the discussion. I, I'm sure that there's going to be members of the public who claim we do that so we can shove it off and discourage them from showing up. I do hear from the public, I know all the councilmembers do. The difficulty is, is that the state has mandated that individuals can come and address the council, and the Brown Act and the state laws mandate that even when they do, we can't talk to them, we can't discuss it, we can't make a decision. Our hands are tied, although we can take that item and put it on a future council agenda and discuss it. Quite frankly, it's a lot easier for somebody to call me and me request the council to put it on the agenda item, and less frustrating than individuals to stand here and make a request and have us sit and look at them, because there's nothing we can do under current state law. And I do want to be responsive to individuals that take the time and come and talk to the city council or make requests. We do our best to get their questions answered, even though we don't get involved in the debate, but I think a debate on that issue is timely, and I think the council should at least have that discussion.
The other thing I'd like to request, and I think staff is probably moving in this direction, but I'd just like to be on record to ask staff to bring back a report to us on the golf course and the clubhouse facility, not only the general condition and the operations, but I would really like to know what our financial support for that property is. It's not clear to me, and I'd like to be clear about it. I see it as a park, or similar to parks. We support parks, I have no problem supporting the golf course. I'd just like to know how much it is. So, maybe when we get that staff, I think staff is doing a review of that operation. Perhaps when you bring that back, we can talk about the actual subsidy.
That's ahead of councilmembers, so we will, we will do that. Thank you. And we're not going to rush staff, as I know that it'll take time to put everything together, but as soon as reasonably possible, we will bring that back as a council item and have that discussion. Are there any other reports, any other items from the councilmembers? Is there any reports from staff and our councilmembers?
Just that Friday's a big day here in the city, and we're going to be cutting a ribbon for interchange that will not be fully open, but at least the bridge connecting La Mesa to Nisqually will be opened after, I believe, we all ride in your car across it. So, that's my understanding, but.
Not bad.
Not quite.
But anyway, it's, it'll be at 1:30, and it's on the Mariposa side is where the ceremony is at, and then we'll traverse across, so.
One way or another.
One way or another. We'll get across.
Okay. Councilman Vias?
Yes, I'd just like to update the, the council on Victor Valley Transit Authority. I sit on that board, and recently, Sandbag has created an ad hoc committee, and they're looking at consolidating all of VVT-A, all the transit authorities into one, and, and also looking at efficiencies. And I guess Ryan McEckren was asked to sit on that ad hoc committee, and I spoke with him because we had an item on our agenda on Monday that wanted to know if we could, that we either not participate in that study, that, that we do a resolution saying that we don't agree with it, we don't want to participate in it, or we do participate in it, and, but we separate out the consolidation part and just participate in the efficiencies and the study part. Well, I spoke with Ryan, and we both agreed that we don't want to let our LTF funds go down the hill. We want to keep them here because if the county gets them, we're going to have to fight, you know, for every nickel and dime that we have to keep transportation going here in our area. So, we voted as, as a board unanimously to participate in the studies for efficiencies, but separate ourselves out from the consolidation part of it. Whether it works or not, or what happens, or what comes from it, we don't know, but that's where we're at. And so, I just wanted you guys to know where I stand and where our board stands, that we want to keep our money up here and not let it go down the hill.
I certainly concur. If you'd like council support on the position you've taken, I think you have it, it only makes sense. We have fought that battle before many, many times. We raise the money locally, we do our best to support our local services, and we do have a very good transit system, so.
Very well-run.
Very well-run. Councilman Kennedy? Do we have no further items then, at this point in time?
Mayor, I do have a very brief report.
Very brief report. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay. I've been trying to not give any reports because you're ready to go, but Mayor Protem McEckren mentioned one event that's Friday, there's also another event in the morning. Congressman Cook is having a women of distinction event, and Friday's going to be a very busy day. There's also another event in the evening that really hasn't had much publicity. We have a homeowners association in the northern area of Victorville that is very active. They're doing a lot of things to improve their neighborhood and, as a result, improving the city. They've actually been hosting for their neighborhood, movies in the park. And it's really for their neighborhood, but they had a situation come up. One of the, the children, a little one-year-old in their neighborhood, her name is Audrey, has a very rare disease. It's called spinal muscular atrophy, and essentially, it, the way this disease works is it affects the nerves controlling voluntary movements, so she can't crawl. I don't know her exact situation, but eventually, what happens with these poor little children is they can't crawl, they can't cough, swallow, they have trouble eating, speaking, everything. This puts a tremendous strain on the family financially, trying to essentially give 24-hour care to this little baby. This little baby actually happens to be, I believe, and Gloria, I think you may know better than I do, the great-great-granddaughter of our former mayor, Bert Lugo. Anyway, the homeowners association reached out to me just to ask for assistance for the family, because someone needs to be with the child at all times. They have tremendous medical expenses, so to the extent you are interested and are willing to donate to this family simply to help with, with basic items, I'll, I'd happily take the collection. I'll be going out, I'm not going to stay for the movie. I've seen Finding Nemo a few times when my kids were small, but I'll, I'd be happy to deliver any donations anybody wants to make. That is all.
Thank you, Doug. Meetings are adjourned at 8:00.